Good evening. Thank you and welcome to the September 27th regular meeting of the Town Council in Rockford for recent council chambers. Please rise for a moment of silence while I conduct the meetings. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its standers, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, men and women. Please call the roll.
Allison. Harmony.
Here.
Fishman.
Here.
Latham.
Here.
Murray.
Here.
Tanna.
Here.
Tessa.
Here.
Sandra.
Here.
Chairman Serbony.
Chairman Serbony is out of state and Councilor Allison is out of the country. She insisted on trying to attend, but time zone difference aren't going to hold the right one. Okay. Mr. Mayor.
This is Mr. Chairman, members of the council and those that attend us. We have some very heralded people here this evening. They are none other than members of the Lyman Hall indoor track team with their coach, Dave Palmer. They have brought home the state indoor track championship. You won it for us, Dave Palmer. We appreciate it very much, Mr. Chairman. The Lyman Hall team is not here, but as the coach should come up, maybe you can say a few words and then introduce them and we have some jackets.
Thank you. It was quite an intro. Excited for this moment. I just want to say thank you to everybody for supporting us. This state championship, I think you looked across the state when we were getting ready to go, normally pick Lyman Hall except for our kids. They believe in one another. They achieved this. I think half of them would be, they're like, are we actually going to do this? Because the scores weren't coming our way. And they should believe in one another. We were the last event to go off and pull bolt and we scored all the points there and ended up bringing home state championship, the first state championship for indoor tracks since 1995. It's a huge accomplishment for Allenville, but also for Lyman Hall. Lyman Hall has struggled to consistently win. I look at this team that's mostly underclassmen, so I'm looking forward to having them for the next couple of years. Seniors on that team, they really create a team, really work together and kind of show everybody what it is to be a Lyman Hall protein on a golf track. So now third goal, these younger athletes are going to have to fill that role and keep the tradition alive. Looking forward to having a program, not just being a freshman, but having it consistently winning the program. It starts with these guys right here, Shona, and Winthe Right thing. But it starts with everybody supporting us and really did the shaping game, helped purchase rigs and all this stuff. They organized all that, et cetera, et cetera. But it doesn't get done unless the counties involved, so I want to say thank you all for really supporting us throughout the season. And as far as these boys go, they really did something that hasn't done a lot of this huge honor. It was a pleasure and unfortunately, so I just want to say thank you guys for doing something that hasn't done at all.
Thank you, Coach Palmer. We have to take care of it, come down and help with the jackets. You truly, you do inspire me. You don't know the number of young people. You may not know their names, but they see what you've accomplished and they want to do the same thing. So well done. We truly appreciate your effort and dedication. Now who do we have here?
Max Holder, the captain.
I'm going to stay up here and face the, your touring fans. Michael Fisher. Owen Rich. Please come on down. Janice. De Pretenzio. Once again, lots of applause for the indoor championship. Get those jackets and try.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations on having the council too and the entire team. If you want to get up and leave now before you can stop. But you can stay, please, I mean, by all means, but I remember sitting where you were. No shame in yourself here now. Moving along to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve or accept a consent agenda? Items A through F, H and I. So moved by Councilor Fishman, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Sandra. All those with favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those both nay. Seated none, motion passes. Item is removed from the consent agenda. That is item 3G. Consider and authorize the police station steering committee to obtain quotes for electrical switchgear bid waiver request in the estimated amount of $80,000 to $100,000 and this was removed by Councilor Tanna.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I removed the item number 1 to 2 to the amount of $80,000 to $100,000. And also because I'm not sure why we are going to get a quote rather than going up to a public bid. So the letter says we are requesting a bid waiver to allow the construction manager to obtain quotes for the equipment rather than a public bid. So I was just curious as to why you're not putting any items out.
The chair of the steering committee, Ward Allison, Captain Shinsky.
Allison. Thank you. Name and title, sir. Thank you.
Allison Captain Shinsky, Chair of the Police Station Steering Committee.
Senator Jeff Anderson, Vice President of Reconstruction for Downs or Construction.
Um, so we are very super requested to be ready instead of $100,000 for anticipated at this point. Um, I will let you explain the reasons why and, you know, even create different stations with D and C, though that would be the best.
So the reason enough, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Johnson. Um, the reason why we have suggested this to the steering committee was to attempt to mitigate the extreme lead times in obtaining electrical switchgear. If we were to wait for the normal bid process based on the current schedule, we wouldn't expect to receive approval to proceed to roughly bid January at this point. Electrical switchgear can take upwards of one year to obtain right now from approval. So the concern with that being is that would have a detrimental effect to the back end of the overall construction schedule and thus having a more significant cost impact to the town of Longford. So what we would be asking to do is solicit multiple prices from electrical switchgear suppliers, share that of course with the steering committee and Allison, and release the gear within the next month or so. So theoretically picking up approximately two months from what the normal process would be, again, trying to maintain overall anticipated construction schedule for the project.
And just to add to that, I did work with the purchasing agent and controller to really narrow down all the options and, you know, we did look at every avenue and we did feel like this is the most beneficial for the project.
Is three and a half months typical for a bid? You said you want to until January for the typical bid process?
Once we go out to bid, it's about an eight week period. So about four weeks for the bid cycle and then about four weeks for us to have detailed store reviews with all those contractors as your construction manager and then develop a AIA GMP amendment to present to the steering committee of the town.
And then how, how will you be obtaining quotes? How, who do you, who do you go to or how, how do you know to ask for them?
We typically partner with a electrician that we have good experience with. We have precedents in doing this type of approach recently because of the environment that we're all living in right now on other municipal projects. So they go to the main vendors, which are common throughout the state of Connecticut that supply electrical switchgear for all construction projects. We have those folks to share. Again, it's just a, it's a, I was sort of trying to pick up time on the overall duration. It's not spending money that we weren't going to spend already as part of the future electrical bid pack, just spending it sooner or to mitigate cost on the back end in the basis.
Sure, yeah, I certainly understand what I'm trying to say with the time. Because my concern going this way would be half the town governments really asking specifically for private and bid process where people would come to us or festivals.
Look, if I would add, it's, it's us that your construction managers soliciting that pricing. That eventual pricing will be part of our guaranteed maximum price that will be submitted to the town at this point based on the schedule in the early part of December.
All right, thank you.
Councilor Fishman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm concerned about the precedent because what I've heard here necessarily applies to anything we, this town would want to bid on. Is there some distinction here?
This is one singular component of the overall construction project of the police department that has had extreme concern about delivery of lead times. We have taken this approach in, again, as I said earlier, in multiple municipalities, try to mitigate that, again, with the idea of getting it and saving the town openly money at the back end of the project because of future schedule delays. It's not any other component of the project currently. It's just the electrical switchgear, the main gear to power new 100 Barnes Road.
And how much do you estimate would save the town by doing this?
Well, the math on the back end, depending when we get it, would save two, three months. Like I had done the math earlier. In our general conditions alone, our supervision is, and I think Allison reported on memo to you, in approximately the $75,000 range. But also what you're mitigating is really not necessarily 100% quantifiable, is in the bids, the anticipation of a longer schedule and escalation that contractors have to build in to their bids. So we're trying to make sure that we have a very well-defined construction schedule so when those bids come in, it's not, you know, it's not any unforeseen conditions as it relates to the overall end date as of the year.
And you're, you would be the individual soliciting the bids, so to speak. contractual arrangement, how long do you estimate it will take you to complete your duties compared to that?
Oh, I have already started a preliminary process associated with that, just to understand what the cost would be. I would think it will be resolved and priced up and shared with the steering committee by the next meeting.
Next meeting of the steering.
So about two weeks.
Okay. So understanding that you've engaged in activity that hasn't been authorized regarding this, let's just say that we empowered our purchasing department to do the same exact things, or something with the police, same sort of timeframe? I heard about the eight weeks, but that's internally created, correct? We can set up any bid process that we potentially want, unless of these indications.
Well, our recommendation, as we had explained to the steering committee, was that trying to solicit a separate bid for just the switchgear was not going to be something that was necessarily desirable from the main electrical contractors that would eventually look at the total electrical package for your new police department. It's not something that is typically done, not in my greatest experience. And I think it just comes back to, I think, a lack of interest in trying to sue a singular competitive bid in a public market to obtain that type of pricing.
Okay, my question to this time, what we heard initially was the problem with this potential eight weeks of term, right? So that eight weeks is created by the town, correct?
So, so just to be more clear on the math, we're anticipating to be out to bid on the total project within the next few weeks. We would anticipate on the current schedule to provide guaranteed maximum price to the town about December 5th and then presented of course to the council. The dates are escaping me, but it's all been through December. And then one month from there, I believe there's a waiting period before we have approval to proceed and authorize those contractors to move forward. That would be roughly mid-January of 2023 before we could release the prime electrical contractor. So that's the math, that if we can, in the next few weeks to a month, be able to release the switchgear, we're picking up, you know, that timeframe from that period till roughly mid-January.
And you representing the town in this process, is somebody that you sign off on the ethics code for the town? Our purchasing agent falls within the ethics code. Is that, are those required as falling upon you as well as representing our town?
Well, again, I don't know of having signed off on the town's ethics code in any way. We have the contract with the town as your construction manager. I can, again, just forgive me for repeating myself, I've implemented this process with other municipalities successfully. There's no financial gain associated with us to be able to do this. It's really just acting on your behalf to try to mitigate the concerns that I've already explained.
Well, I understand the representation, but certainly like our purchasing agent normally handles these things. He is constrained by our ethics code to protect, you know, potentially negotiate with or approve a bid from a company that he has an interest in, let's just say that's the most egregious. And I'm just trying to figure out if we deviate from our normal process, if it is anticipated that you will fall within the same legal context. And what I'm hearing is no. I mean, was, I don't know if anybody's ever considered this.
I have not heard that question before, Mr. Counselor, being posed to me, other than just knowing how I've conducted myself and how I would intend to enter the act of town of Longford is certainly, you know, at the highest standard.
No, and I cast a spurt, but we're asking, but we are required, you know, we make our purchasing agents sign off on that, you know, and I trust our purchasing, right? We're sort of putting you in place of that individual. So I'm just trying to wrap my arms around that because this is unusual and our ordinance is do not provide for this automatic deviation. So you're coming to us, asking for permission, and I'm analyzing the whole thing. Those are my thoughts. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome. Any other questions, comments, or concerns on the council? Are there any in the public? Seeing none, no final comments from the council. Chair will entertain a motion to authorize Police Station Steering Committee to obtain quotes for electrical switchgear bid waiver request in the estimated amount of $80,000 to $100,000. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
So moved and seconded. And, or please call the roll.
Harmony.
No.
Fishman.
No.
Latham.
Yes.
Murray.
Yes.
Tanna.
No.
Tessa.
Yes.
Sandra.
Yes.
And there were four yeses and three no's, but the council requires five to take action. So the motion fails. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to clear something up. Law covers what was being alluded to, where there'd be a situation where you're underhanded, you know, dealing with someone, you're getting a kickback or whatever. Our ethics code is one thing, but law covers that as well. So we are adequate to be protected.
I agree. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All the question answered, great. Sorry, I may go to the public. We should speak to one of the firsts. Mr. Brooks.
Good evening, Carl's Longdale Road. Our, oh, I guess I'll ask a question. I need to tell me. It's about the grant for the train station. Has the town submitted its application already?
Do you want to wait until that?
Well, can I, I'll, I have some questions on that. Will we be able to pass it? Because just the way it's worded on here, your country won't let us decide what's in motion here.
If it's reasonably connected, I would say.
So it's your, and I'm not, I just, you know, just, all right.
I'm just asking.
So that one, I'll, I'll, um, has the town gone out for, is this the first application we've applied for under the grant?
Mr. Mayor, this is the first time I've applied for the grant.
As far as I know, it's a very new grant. I don't believe so, but I am not absolutely certain. I believe it's a very new grant.
And do we, how do you plan on funding this grant? Almost $2 million, is that in the budget?
Sure, I think that's all that can be dealt with under the subject matter of the tenant.
All right. On question, do you have, the way you're building it out, do you have a tenant or specific person or entity in mind for this project?
I think that also would fall under the internal, when we have the consent here.
And then on it, um, I think that most pieces will fall, if you're telling me, most pieces will fall under. Then one quick question.
I will give you extraordinary due weight on this event, I don't want to oversteep into it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And then just you, nobody else.
All right. I know you're making a joke. I know everybody treats it equally, but they're by the council, they're always doing. Thank you. On here, you're asking for $15,000 for Art to the chair, to the controller. How much have we allocated and spent so far on Art? You're asking for $15,000 more.
The original probation was $25,000. We spent, I think it's about $24,000.
And that's all for the consultant?
All for the consultant.
Thank you.
And what, and the software applications?
That, that's their software? So it's all to the, it's all to the consultant? Nothing's been spent on any, not on any interference of anybody in need? I don't think it's been approved.
I do. Mr. Comerford.
Will Comerford, Roger, try? Mayor, can you, can you tell us what, what actually replaced with the demolition of Brothers Building down there?
Building was abolished and removed.
Okay, so was the bid, um, that was given to the contractor following the deal?
As far as I know, it was.
So you're not familiar with the foundation laws?
I'm not familiar with any of the details of the bid document or, or compliance or non-compliance in regard to work performed, I believe, given we paid the bill and we signed off on by the department. It was not in accordance with what the language is and it works with customary business standards.
Okay, so you're of the opinion that contractor subscribed exactly what the bid stated. I had a discussion yesterday, very small, and there's, in my opinion, there have been some problems that came up. And Art of the bid, bid number 18, that 144 Demels Brothers Restaurant clearly states, clearly states, shattered, remove all the foundation walls. Somebody posted on Facebook while the work was getting done, and I happened to be out of state at the time, I happened to see it. And in my opinion, it appeared that the walls weren't removed and that it was an, oh no. And then Public Works had to go down there and do the work that the contractor never fulfilled. But you're in charge of that department. You oversee that department and the people that work, in this case, the director of Public Works, works for you and is responsible for you. And it's fair for me to say, as you're sitting here today, you want to read it at this.
I was aware of the general project, need to remove the building. The details were handled by the department. My knowledge was handled appropriately. And you're raising questions about it? We can look into the questions, but we're not going to get very far into details because I'm not familiar with all of the details and that can be reviewed.
So should the director of Public Works come to you and tell you this?
He would not have time at this day or mind reviewing every project that is performed either by public works or private contractors and go over the details of it. We can't function that way. There has to be greater efficiency. So they determine when something is completed, they should be using the proper legal as well as customary construction practices and we move forward from that. If there's a problem, we can investigate it, determine if there is a problem or not.
Okay, so to be crystal clear, probably over my minutes.
Not probably, but okay.
At least I'm consistent. So at the end of the day, the contractor never did what it was required to do. Public Works had to go down there, in my opinion, and escalate down approximately eight, 10 feet and remove all the walls, haul all the stuff away, pay for the work. So taxpayers, everybody here, everybody that live in color watching this, paid twice. Paid twice, and our top administrator knows nothing about it. Nothing. So the question is, is how many other transactions is that happening? Is he so, so busy that we're out to pay people twice for something that wasn't done the first time? So my two minutes is up. I'll be back for the next person to talk. Thank you.
Thanks. Actually, it's very good to do, but anybody else? Somebody have questions or comments for this room or for the conference?
Will Comerford, Roger, try? YouTube, government TV puts these meetings on YouTube. Is that still happening? Doing all?
It does.
Okay, so right now it's on YouTube?
Uh, there is a camera issue. I don't know if it's live tonight. It's not live tonight, but it is. I don't believe the last meeting was either for someone.
Yes, it was. This is the first one that wasn't.
So this is the first one. The question on the issue of public. The question, I guess, will probably be to the law department. YouTube owns the rights to whatever's on their channel, not the town of Wellington, because I feel freedom of information. I asked for a copy of one of the town council meetings and it hasn't, they had to hire someone else out because it was on YouTube. They didn't have the capacity to digitally transfer it, all these sorts of different excuses. The point that's been, or the question I have from the law department is, that's not the town's possession. That's YouTube's. So those moments in time that are on YouTube, we don't have any back, any hard copy digital DVD to back the files. Is that the case?
I don't know anything about YouTube's legal rights, but my understanding is you asked for a copy of the meeting and the DVD. They didn't have the technology to turn it into a DVD and told you under the FOI app that if you wanted a copy on the DVD, they'd have to send it out for such a purpose. That's my recollection. Is that not what happened? You wanted it on a DVD? We don't, we don't have to have that technology, but we, we can, if somebody can do it at plus, you pay the actual plus, you can have it that way.
I believe that's a service we don't necessarily provide on the side YouTube. You have access to it free.
Right, but the question is, if something happened to YouTube and the cloud, there's no physical, anything tangible.
It doesn't have to be a tape recorder to see. This does not have to be on TV. It doesn't have to be video. It's not required.
Okay, so it's just a minute that, that, okay. Um, again.
Well, it's recorded, but it doesn't have to be video.
There's a tape recorder.
Are we still recording this at the time?
We also have it on the server. It's on the server also.
It is on a server. We do anything at the top of the department.
Okay. Um, my next question. I was about to say it again, and the sale of the property between Center Street Brewery and the Frisk Store was sold, I believe Dick Kaplan for eighteen thousand, whatever. I totally was not in support of that, number one, because it didn't make sense to me. Why would we be giving up property that the town owned for measly eighteen thousand dollars? More importantly, it's come to my attention, in my opinion, that Dick Kaplan has always wanted to shut that road down, that freeway. Was that ever looked into? Because in my opinion, he, when I talked to the guy that owned the brewery, he was under the impression that Dick Kaplan clearly wanted them because I went by there a couple of times and he sectioned it off. So does the town have a legal easement or right of way over that property? Because the town or the town people that are using it on, God knows how long, or did he technically cut it off?
You're talking about the right of way between church property and Mr. Kaplan's property. That is recorded as an easement over that land. Town does not have any right to use that. It's not a public way at all. And we have Wallace, Shereker, I'm not sure which Wallace it is, the rear of the property. But, um, we have, we have, as a government, no rights to that passageway between those two properties.
But I'm talking about on Wallace, who came up Wallace, he put the left to go toward the back of where Kaplan's is.
That's all private property.
Right. So I was just trying to create that the council knew that that was potentially the intent here. Because then it becomes landmark and also it causes a problem because he theoretically could shut the thing down. And I think that that was the intent.
That the land sold.
Not the land sold. I'm talking about if you were to walk Wallace Avenue and take a left before Center Street Brewery, would they block?
That's all private property.
Right.
And it's been private property. There's been no change in that.
Then, then my final question, and I appreciate this. And when, when the town put the sidewalks in there, why didn't they continue the sidewalk all the way through as opposed to putting ramps in there so that cars could still penetrate through property that we don't own?
We provided sidewalks and the appropriate ADA, uh, curb cuts in order to accent walls. We did not put those on private property.
You put them on town-owned property, but the, the six-inch concrete sidewalk should have been continuous from Center Street all the way to the end of the other side of Center Street Brewery. So that you, you said it yourself, it's private, it's private property. But yet we made it accessible by putting two separate ramps in twenty feet apart. So clearly, any vehicles can still go through there. I don't understand why.
So you're saying we shouldn't, we should have sealed off the ability of Mr. Kaplan, his invitees to his business, seal off their ability to leave their property and access the walls?
Yes.
Well, that's an interesting position. I would think he would have a good argument to say the town has no right to prevent the ingress, ingress egress from his property onto walls, which has been his right for as long as any of us can remember.
But then, then kind of it's counter-dictory to what he just said because he can do the same thing then.
No. Mr. Comerford, I do not understand what you're saying. And I think we're going to bore a lot of people because I don't know how to respond to something that I don't understand.
He can shut down that road tomorrow. Where the sidewalk is, he can put a fence across it, right?
He can shut down the public road. If he wants to prevent people from entering into his property, he has a right to do that.
That's the point. We, we did the sidewalk, we should have continued it straight across. We chose not to. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have a public question or comment? Seeing none, I will end all the question and comment portion of this meeting for that general part. And agenda item number six, conduct the public hearing. I hereby convene the public hearing for the amendment of the four hundred sixty thousand dollars school system capital improvement program phase four ordinance adopted April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one to increase the appropriation of bond authorization by additional four hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars for security vestibules at schools within the town. The ordinance, which is the subject of this public hearing, is available to the public and may be obtained at this meeting or from the town court. Is there a motion and a second to read the title of the proposed ordinance and waive the reading of the remainder of the ordinance, incorporating this whole text into the minutes of this meeting?
So moved.
Okay.
I was going to kill all of you if nobody mentioned that. Forever and ever, we will read every single ordinance. Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Seeing none, motion passes. Noran is amending ordinance appropriating four hundred and sixty thousand dollars for school system capital improvement program phase four and authorizing the issue of four hundred and sixty thousand dollars in bonds of the town to meet said appropriation pending issuance thereof and making them temporary warrants for such purpose to increase the appropriation of bond authorization therein by additional four hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars. Are there any comments from the public? Going once, going twice, seeing none. Is there a motion and a second that the proposed ordinance be adopted from the council?
So moved.
Seconded. Moved and seconded by Councilor Maron and Samry. Are there any comments, questions, or discussion upon this matter? Councilor Fishman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just procedural, it has to be, Mr. Fazi has been here. Uh, not that I have any questions under strain to figure out if there's somebody here under our bond council.
No one from our council here. Excuse me. No one from our council here, sir.
Okay. Is there a reason? Because I, I know that our attorney Fazi has switched firms and I didn't know. You know, I used to always ask, why is this gentleman here? You know, we're ready to be, we're ready to say, well, that's what we always do. So now, you know, he's not here, so.
We're still using Attorney Fazi. This is just mentioning previous ordinance.
We're going to be issuing additional bonds in order to meet this ordinance, correct?
Correct. No bonds have been issued yet.
Sure. And that's usually the case that we have. And I'm just trying to figure out, somebody, was there a change in philosophy or, or why?
I don't think there's any change in philosophy of Attorney Fazi. Attorney Fazi is in the process of, of, uh, ceasing his activities as bond counsel and I don't think he was able to be here.
Okay, so these are available, that's sort of acceptable, that was, that's all I have for it to require. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Chair, are there any other questions or comments in the council? Seeing none, then we'll proceed to the public.
Harman?
Yes.
Fishman?
Yes.
Lathan?
Yes.
Maron?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Tessa?
Yes.
Nandri?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted. Thank you. Will now conduct the public hearing, consider an act on amendment to the ordinance as for salon and personal service establishments. I hereby convene the public hearing for the amendment of the salon of chapter one seventy-three Salon and Personal Services Establishments of the Code. Is there a motion and a second to read the title of the proposed ordinance and to waive the reading of the remainder of the ordinance, incorporating this whole text into the minutes of this meeting?
So moved.
So moved and seconded by Councilors Tessa and Maron. All those in favor releasing the five by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Seeing none, the motion passes. Ordinance amending chapter one seventy-three Salon and Personal Services Establishments of the Code. Are there any questions from the public? Once, twice, three times. Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. Is there a motion and second on the proposed ordinance to be adopted?
So moved. Seconded.
So moved by Tessa, seconded by Maron. Any questions or comments by the council? Councilor Comerford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I just wanted to make note, um, that with this change, we did slight, very slight, but we did lower the fees of most of the businesses. Um, and I think, you know, during ordinance, maybe we discussed how we just felt it was a slight, a little something that we could do, um, you know, these other businesses, they, um, and I just wanted to make note of that in this, the ordinance committee, we have this.
Thank you. Councilor Fishman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a question for the chairs, if I may. In this, in one seventy-three, it's an area that I know they commoditized, but included here just for my education. I'm looking at section C, um, about suspending without warning prior to a circuit hearing of the license. Do we provide, I didn't see it here, once that suspension happened on a revocacy basis for a hearing process thereafter?
We didn't even touch that section, so I got people.
Yeah, no, I understood.
I think the purpose of that section is that it's imminent hazard because why?
Well, the things that we are talking about are perhaps implicated in number two.
So if you look at A, it talks about, so immediately thereafter, you're issued a cease and desist and L is here to.
Correct. So if there is an imminent health concern and we close them on site because of that imminent concern, they have the opportunity to come forward and present as to why they should be reopened and that the violation has been corrected.
On the next page, state your depth, please, the appeal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I, I just wanted to kind of clarify on some of the common topics of Congress we discussed. You know, a lot, a lot of times with, with fees, you know, we talk about having to tax people and when we're not taxing, there's always Ds or permit skeletons and every other cost of businesses. But, um, we, we did discuss, and she's absolutely correct. We had an opportunity to, uh, we were discussing changes to actually go from fifty dollars to a hundred. I believe the state ceiling was two fifty. And a lot of the different establishments were, were getting, um, they were being assessed for different things, like if they did hair and nails and multiple, potential for multiple fees. And when we, when we discussed this with the department, we found that it wasn't this major revenue stream that the town was getting and we were offsetting a bunch of costs in the, in the department. There's, there's definitely a lot of footwork for the inspections. And when, when there's return inspection or return effort, uh, because of the fines they get built in, and that's when someone's out of compliance and not willing to work along to get things straightened out, those start to cover those costs. But I, I, I did want to emphasize on, on what she started to bring up because it was an opportunity for us to say, hey, look, we're, we're looking at cost impact and we didn't need to do this. We didn't need to raise this amount. So we, we kept the original amount and we instead of bringing it up to a hundred, we lowered everything else to fifty. So, um, and I want to communicate that because a lot of times that, that we sit up here, the, the, the taxpayers, they, they don't have a clear understanding of some of the things yet. Actually, the business owners don't either. They don't understand why the change in the fees, why it would suddenly go from fifty to a hundred, it doubles my cost. And I just wanted to bring out, we had an opportunity to hold that in place and then, and we did that because it was, it was important to us, even if it was something small, to, to take that effort to try to offset that, that burden on, on our small businesses. And I really just wanted to, I, I accept that a little bit more. So that, Mr. Chairman.
So, if I, if I can comment on that?
Please.
So I just wanted to give some rationale as to why the fees were raised to a hundred. The initial ordinance was established in two thousand thirteen and the fees were set at that time. They haven't been increased since then. But our real, uh, looking at our adjoining towns and as to what they are charging for licensing of their establishments, Wongford is, even, even at a hundred dollars is the lowest in all surrounding towns. Getting an understanding, Chesapeake, which is, includes Cheshire, our neighbor, is two hundred and twenty-five dollars per facility. Pontiac Valley, which is North Haven, and Hampton is one forty-five. Um, Middletown is one hundred. And then Marion is a hundred and East Shore, which is also within our region, is a hundred and twenty-five or a hundred and fifty. And as we're out there doing our inspections, we, um, a lot of times get approached by the property owner or the business owner, asking us if we can do a moratorium on salons in our towns or on nail facilities because there's too many for the, for them to support in this town. They feel like their clients are being torn and going somewhere else because now they have so many options. So our rationale behind raising it to a hundred dollars flat fee was, uh, trying to put us more in line with our adjoining towns so that perhaps, um, some of the competition would be, um, be stopped.
And, and, if I may, and, and I appreciate, I appreciate the, the thought process. And I don't, I don't mean to suggest that, you know, we were doing something bad and you're a producer, so please don't take it that way. And that is an added element, which I don't think was discussed that evening, in my event, but I, and, and while I can kind of see the argument for gee, there's a lot of, you almost would assume that if, if there are more and more coming, that it can't simply just be the lower fee. There, there's got to be enough customers to support them. And I, and I, I, I want, I'll take the opportunity to ask. So as, as these existing businesses approach you with that kind of a mindset and say, gee, there's another one that popped open, is, is it safe to assume that the, are the, is the supply outstripping demand, I guess is the question I'm asking.
So I really can't answer that because I'm not in the business position. So, um, I have heard in the past business owners talking about their loss of revenue because there are so many in the town now that are, but I personally can't speak to what their loss of revenue is or how many the town can support. That was part of our rationale for increasing the fee.
Well, I, I, I'm sensitive to, to their comments about that, but I, I really think it gets to be a dangerous place where at any new town, you says, well, we'll, we'll start to marginalize how many more people can come by just raising, raising the amount of fees and taxes. That'll keep a few of them out. I, we, we should be encouraging more businesses. And, and, and on top of that, I, I would hope that, you know, we, we've got different organizations in the town, WCI and, and other, other entities that are supposed to be there to help these small businesses. And I would encourage them even, that if they are struggling in the face of. And I would encourage them even, that if they are struggling in the face of competition, that they might, might reach out to these different organizations that we have and say, look, there's suddenly a lot of nail shops, there's suddenly a lot of barbers. How do I differentiate myself? What do you want or what can I do? Because I don't think raising the fees is right. It's all logical the way you described it when other towns were very low. But I want to encourage that for our town. I want the businesses to come and establish. Now, I would almost argue that the saturation point is, is the consumer decides that. Because if there's enough consumers to keep all these businesses afloat, then they'll all stay afloat. If competition starts to close a couple of them, then there's not enough demand. But I, I'm real weary to say, well, we'll raise our rates and maybe it's less and we'll open. I, I don't want to see us doing that. But I, I, I think the sentiment of comparing our rates as opposed to the neighbors was a very good one. But I, I still appreciate the decision that, that we arrived at by trying to keep the fees low.
Counselor Maron.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Chairman, well, thank you for being here. Just so you get to the background, so I suggested the change for fees. And my comments were along the lines, usually when government charges a fee for something, it's sort of intended as a barrier to entry, right? To prevent those businesses from getting into that space. And your comments about you being asked about it sort of speaks to that idea. But you know, the, the department's about health, right? And so how much to do which can serve the public health, the proper inspections and so on. So to not necessarily connect the fee, you know, what the cost to run the department, the fees bring in such a small amount. So my rationale was that, you know, if you charge a dollar or you charge a thousand dollars, it's certainly an increasing efficacy of your ability to conduct your inspections and so on. So if you disconnect the actual inspection, the possibility is to run the department from the, the actual, you know, fee that you charge business. And at that point, it becomes just sort of a, you know, a loophole. So we look at things like what do other towns charge, which is not an unfair comparison, right? But I think that the goal of the committee at that point is just to, you know, what, we talked a lot of time in our, we're talking about how to help businesses, how do we help business, you know, in this regard. Can we do a little bit more? It's certainly not a lot of money, but you know, it's not really a lot of money on each side. So I, I mean, I guess if I had my father, he wouldn't charge anything, but I realize that, you know, in, you know, 2022, that's sort of an unrealistic expectation. So I'm, that's why we sort of went in the direction we did.
All right, so I understand. I just wanted to share the work that.
No, I appreciate, I appreciate your work.
Any other questions, comments in the council? Seeing none in the court, please call the board.
Armin?
Yes.
Dishman?
Yes.
Platten?
Yes.
Maron?
Yes.
Tanna?
Yes.
Tessa?
Yes.
Zan?
Yes.
Motion passes. The ordinance has been adopted. Thank you very much. Thank you everybody that worked on that. Agenda item, agenda item number eight. I have a motion to approve, to approve resolution on rising Mayor William Double, William Dickson to file application for the state of Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development, D E C D, Connecticut Communities Challenge Grant for a three million dollar project for the rehabilitation of the exterior and interior of the town's historic railroad station building. To provide such additional information, to execute other, such other documents as may be required, to execute an assistance agreement with the state of Connecticut, D E C D, for financial assistance if offered, to execute on the amendments, decisions and revisions thereto, carry out code activities and to act as the authorized representative of the town of Wallingford. So moved. So moved by Counselor Sandra. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Maron. Thank you very much. Gentlemen, name and title, mic, thank you.
And Bill Silver, thousand and four, Salt Lake County, selling and associates, architects, engineers and interior designer. When do you have to lay in?
Great, thank you. Do you have a presentation on, or whether you want to start the questions?
I was going to start by reading a statement. I'm standing in.
You more microphone, please? Microphone? Yes, thank you. I don't love talk.
All right. I'm standing in the seating for Joe Mira presentation.
Really?
And we're being witnessed, we need to be serious. I have a member of the E C for years now, I volunteer my time to E C, give the lip work and embrace my family and the community. It's my home and like everyone in this, my life is now. My goal today is to provide an effective summary of the project to restore the historic Wallingford Railroad Station. Gentlemen with me will detail the specifics of the project, to date, the next steps in the process and the support it will require from the council and the board. What I hope to communicate is why we feel this is a good move for our community and the economic urgency of the surrounding area. Like everything, there is a cost of reliability to the railroad station if it's something business ready, whether it's a restaurant or a rebuild, a store or both. This is a town asset that, there was an opportunity for challenge grant that would match fifty percent of the funding to make this project a reality. This is a town asset that will be prepared and upgraded regardless of this project. I can have this opportunity now with the challenge grant and upgrade something special in the town center that will have a deep and lasting impact. Our town center is often divided into sections, upper and lower center street. The upper section crossing Main Street is a vibrant, active area with three restaurants, two shops and its home to much of our community activity. In recent years, there has been most improvements to this area. So the parking alone makes it more inviting to the store buildings, have it renovated. The upper section of town has its own rhythm, heartbeat, throughout the time. And then there's a lower section, essentially break off, they want to be actually called avenue, too, has its own flow of rhythm. This whole area has recently gone, undergone massive improvements, that is for economic growth and development. The new deposit, the new parking lot being constructed in the former, for a restaurant that does not have a foundation in it. Beautiful new train station are placed, the area is still undergoing great transformation and is becoming more of a destination. The restoration of the historic railroad station will become the anchor that connects upper and lower sections of Wallingford Town Center. Help every business in between them and in the surrounding area. It's a vibrant, walkable town center, accessible by foot, bus and train. Renovate the train station in and of itself will become a billboard to people driving by, people on the train. It's, it's kind of gateway to our community. Our town center, as most residents know, is just the tip of the iceberg of what our town has to offer. This project, this area is at the center of all and in part of our community. It will become a major hub of activity producing variable economic impact to the community and many of your stuff.
And Mr. Chairman, my name.
Please.
Again, Bill Silver, the Salt Lake County, registered for historic architecture, and our group as well, many of you know Dave Stein. And I was rushing to be here right now as a speaker. It, you obviously know, eighteen seventy-one, this is a second ever hired building and it is unique in the state. And if this is ever to be restored or maintained, obviously you know as you know pictures because you spent money in the past to preserve it. So the existing photographs, obviously from the forties and the thirties sort of comment that there hasn't been really much that has changed on the exterior of the building, which means you've been good stewards of the historic character of the building. On the left, it means the floor plan, and you know, I'm standing in the way. Floor plan of the existing one in nineteen seventy-three, the old students reconfigured the interior of the space and eventually became the adult education space. So it's really configured well for offices. But again, it's public use as opposed to tenant use and the tax made use that it could see in its future. So we obviously documented all the existing conditions as part of the building to prepare it for the idea session that we worked with the committee. Certainly, this board representative will just briefly touch on the exterior, restoration elements that we strongly encourage. Many of these, for instance, the slate building precedes nineteen seventy-three. That's all of the fifty years of life on some barely, barely thin slate that has done well in its life. It also has a standing steel roof on the top and you can't see a lot of all the reaches that you can see that dates from nineteen ninety-one. That's thirty years, which is a good life, for standing steel roof and this time to maintain it. So what we have closed as part of our, back here as part of that three million, is the exterior restoration, which is truly stabilizing the exterior of the building. Because it's on the national register in nineteen ninety-three, there is variable that should be changed on its exterior appearance. And if we were to eventually in that direction, the same historic preservation office would stop on its end saying, no, you don't. So therefore, we're replacing the standing steel roof, repairing where we can, slate roof, because old slate doesn't really get much older. It is essentially all the word that's sure it might stand. So there's no reason not to maintain some of those slate roofs. The exterior has been weather beaten, especially in the lower reaches because of its adjacency to the road and the salt bearing trucks that we allow to traverse across it. And so the groundstone, the brick of the lower reaches are stalling a bit and they do need to be replaced or restored with some type of materials. On the interior, as part of the walls and tree, we are simplifying the layout by creating an upstairs tenant space with a new elevator, new restrooms. So there could be an independent second floor tenant that looks down below into one larger tenant space that again has the lift and the restrooms, the entrances are maintained and safe. Possibly an imposed kitchen for, let's say, a restaurant use could be repurposed as part of the existing space. And again, not adding on certain ones existing as well as restoring or repairing elements of the building, which includes windows and especially the exterior doors after thirty years of being manipulated constantly. We should build some more after thirty years of the needs that we have. So those are some of the features that we are proposing, the conditions to mostly as part of this project. The, there is, you, you, you care that have continued over and on one.
You can limit with all your wonderful statements, the amount of questions that come from everybody else, don't be greedy. So yes, you can.
Okay. We had a large man in, helping you see the spreadsheets, roughly eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the exterior stabilization and restoration of the, of the existing materials. We can't change materials. So once standing steel is on there, you can't go to shingles because the slate will ever next. So preservation truly gains authenticity. The interior improvements, which includes structural changes, the stair towers for life safety for the future tenant uses, the restrooms is another six hundred and fifty thousand. And then mechanical, electrical plumbing and protection changes, not so much improvements. We would be delivering enough air conditioning, air handling to adequately ventilated to current COVID standards. But we wouldn't be putting in all the finishes and all the diffusers and the finishing touches until the tenant comes in to do those connections and make those front connections. So essentially, we are preparing the shell for the future tenant uses, which the commission has been looking at. Various examples of view purposes and train stations for, for whatever use they may come its way. And with that, I'll stop and turn back to you.
Thank you. Counselor Christian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, welcome, colleague, for being here and to meet the main partner of Salt Lake. David Mr. Stein has always represented your company very valued. You know, we've heard a lot about singular tenant here. And, you know, recently I was at a establishment in Hartford that had taken a warehouse, they converted it into something like Chelsea Market or a place we lost. I have the name.
Fennig Hall.
Fennig Hall, that's right. Has there been this, because we, to my knowledge, we have been part of these discussions, you know, sort of my vision is to have someone like maybe WCI or something like set up eats in this building and, you know, rent out space for many different restaurants and shops and that kind of stuff. Given your design, just again, my understanding, you basically have open floor plan, would you still have that flexibility to do something like that?
Yes, absolutely. Maybe needs to be grass and entry, not for sake of convenience of the customers. Very calculated as part of that core space that's created there. So we can do the left, the right, up and down, so there's a multitude of tenants that can be in the building that don't deserve another tenant.
Okay, yeah, that's, because I, I kept on hearing our tenant is singular and, you know, I just want to be part of that, that discussion. So, you know, I, I like what I see and I like what I've heard and that's all I wanted to ask about once again. Thank you for coming here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon. So my questions are on the same topic. So to me, it looks like it's a little too specific on the interior. You know, I noticed when I went through the backup, it sounds like it's being designed for two tenants. Which is sort of what it was meaning towards. And I'm just wondering why they're doing so much work to the interior before we know that a tenant might be. So I understand the exterior, I completely understand the code upgrades. But the interior, I'm just a little confused as to why we would have the tenant first. And then we can decide what needs to be done to that specific tenant. I would hate for us to spend money doing interior upgrades and design and then we get a tenant who says, I want the entire thing or maybe get more than that we thought we would get. So can you explain why the interior of the design?
Yeah, the core, the core spaces are essentially designed for any user, whether it's retail, whether it's restaurant. Everyone needs restrooms, everyone needs stairs, or unless we're not wanting ADA accessibility, go for life's sake. So that's why we've located those stairways and the core facilities of the restrooms where they are. Centrally located so that you could, on the lower floor, break it up into two users or it could be one continuous user across, and of course, the committee, commission talked about, I think great if a restaurant were to go in there, that's perfect, at the right side, a perfect place for a kitchen to be located with service entries and stuff and like, like that. Ideally, even if it's one user, the convenience for the lift requirement, whether it's retail or office, you do have to provide accessibility as much as you can, and also restrooms. It's obviously much more convenient to have them on the second floor and just not locate them on the first floor. So we try to be as central as possible and probably before we actually finish the construction documents, so that we will have made progress with potential tenants and ideas so that we can tailor a bit of the design just to be more flexible and with your input, we're flexible to other ideas. So we don't have all, but this is kind of the core services that serve any tenant.
Okay, so this is flexible still at this point. So if, as this goes on, let's say we're awarded a grant and then we realize that there is one large tenant and they say, we don't want the bathrooms in the middle, we'd really rather they go over here. That we still have the flexibility to do that.
Yes.
Perfect. All right, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Andrew.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I have to, I have to say, it's probably been forty years since I've been inside that building. As, as a youth, we used to gather on Saturdays and do, do different things there as, as different groups. And so my battery is admittedly very, very fuzzy. The pictures are great, and I appreciate the pictures, but it's well changed from what we used to use it when I was a teenager. So I, I mean, well, your drawing show a, a first floor plan and a second. Wasn't there also a mezzanine area that might have even higher, like almost like a, like a third level up inside that building?
If it was, it was just a service mezzanine and not full of people's space.
Okay.
And of course, there is a basement to put them on.
So that was my next question, the basement area, are we going to be utilizing? Are we going to be utilizing all this part of any type of design? Or if, like the example with restaurant, they might use it for dry goods or, you know, takeout items? Or would they be able to get into that space as well?
I believe it is primarily a micro business. I believe it's primarily a client.
So it pulls all like utilities pipes and hot water heaters and things like that? Okay. Another question that I have is, you know, kind of on the outline here and kind of dovetails off the questions that were already asked. So we're doing these core types of setups with this plan, I don't know what it's like, with the boilers and the and not the water systems, which are designed just to basically be the way they are to bring up to code. So if a tenant wanted to come in, whatever that tenant might need to do, if they needed a bigger boiler, hot water, is that a possibility that assume that they would take on and add in for the customization of the area? Or is that something that's part of the effort we're doing here?
No, that would be, one of the last line items is the estimate was just the developer to fit out allowance at the very bottom of the fourth grade in total. There would be that allowance that it would have to extend to customize even the mains. For instance, the IV systems, the boilers probably shouldn't be third size for the volume of the space and the occupancy. But even duct systems, maybe trucks, maybe trucks would be extended into centrally logically located mains for ventilation. But then they would extend the flex ducts to the diffusers. That could be a developer or a tenant to fit out a cost.
Okay, and maybe this is more an EDC question, but as, you know, we have to, we have to do some level of work here anyway because the station needs tenant. It's need repairs, it needs upgrades, it needs fixing, and we know we have, we have it all done in there present. So I, in various discussions you had with other people that have looked in from the town, they're looking for space, has the idea of possibly utilizing space been floated just, hey, in the future, we might be looking to do something with this area?
I believe our former EDC here have had some conversations with people, expressed some opinions, but I don't think anything very solid. I think there's, we're waiting to see what the space looks like and, you know, our opinion, I think, is that it's not going to be about the space itself.
Yeah, and that was, that was actually going to be like my add-on to that. So it's definitely, you know, obviously, once you're inside the building, you can do a lot of things to it. And it only, it's not even a reservation, which is the thing that people have to overcome is that basically they're parking in that parking lot and walking over the sidewalks, which, you know, the train tracks here, but it's a sidewalk. And people, dozens of people do it every single day I do when I walk through. So those kind of little negative elements, you feel like are like a complete non-issue, right?
I don't think so. It's a marquee building, you know, it'll be the center of the area. You know, depending on what goes in there, like the city, the restaurant, coffee shop, retail shop, it's a prime location. So I don't think it'll be our space to rent.
And is the, is the town, is the town flexible on what we can put in there? And the reason that I ask this question is that I know that with, you know, bars and restaurants and, you know, there's always that concern, there's another one going downtown. But I, I've seen former buildings converted into the micro breweries and that they have a fantastic area. I mean, there's gathering area, they've got the beer on tap, they have, you know, guest wines in the house. And then there's a, not even just like little conference areas, but they've got games and you don't know that whole floor plan. There's a lot of space there. And I think that especially if it's open enough, there's one place that I visited, they had small food because there's a food element, I can't remember if it was selling alcohol, but they, because of the way that the area was almost like least off, like it was pizza place and sandwich guy, they had adjacent spaces. But it was almost like they brought in a food truck, but people could also bring food in. So that, that brought up the business for all the restaurants in the area because people would bring them. Do we, do we believe that the town's got enough flexibility between the health department and codes that we might be able to attract a customer like that or a tenant like that?
I would, I would ask you to check the Joe era on that. I think I want to answer for him, but my, my guess would be yes. I think if we do this right and build the proper base, you know, we'll have multiple people choosing to decide what we really want to put in there. It's going to be a special.
That, that's great. It's great to hear because again, I, I feel that to your point, this is like a magnet that'll bring, people will come because it'll be new, it'll be fresh, but I really think that it could be an add-on to the whole area because, you know, in, you know, based on whatever goes in there, if people are coming down for music or if people are coming down for coffee or whatever, instead of going in there, they're able to bring things that will stop up the street, carry something in that will get their coffee, sit at the table. Like I said, with there's like, you know, a little area for music. I, I think this has a lot of positives and to me, there's almost zero negative because we got to put some money into this anyway. So I appreciate the outline and the cost breakdown. It's really good. It's very simple to see where everything's going to go. So I appreciate all the time and effort on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. It's Andrew Counsel Tessa.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, appreciate the presentation on the work on this. I have just some overall questions. I far be it for me to ever suggest a town with a question on anything. But we find ourselves in a situation where we are contemplating this amount of time. I'm bored, but I have a lot of ideas of my own. We're also faced, we will be faced with decisions about the armory of the police station. So it's very important to me that when we're making these decisions, we're doing them as part of a comprehensive look at the whole industry because we certainly have primary concern of, for example, what to do with the belt vegetation. The faster we go with the train station, the faster they gotta move out. If, in fact, it is their desire and it proves prudent that the board of ed potentially take over that armory building, then what a great idea, maybe develop that over to there. Worst case scenario, maybe that takes a little while, therefore, it's to find a temporary space where it built and they get into there. And that would be ideal. And if it was a one-year delay involved this time together, that's one of those situations where I would say let's take it slow. Make a better decision comprehensively. So I'm concerned about the timeframe, but I like where we're going so far. I might, as I was reading this stuff, I was thinking, and I think I'm not alone, that those on the council might be thinking, is there already a plan in mind that somebody has? And are we kind of pursuing that? And I read the, the ideas for what an RFP would be, how would RFP would be proposed. And that, at very least, seems to indicate we're looking, we would be looking for a game developer to come in, lease them the building for ten years and then decide what to do. I'm assuming we wouldn't accept an RFP if we didn't afford the use. So I like hearing that you're all open to suggestions on what final use might be. I don't want to see a question if it are a beef or something and be forced to make a decision that might have implications for bed, et cetera, other type of things. Far be it, someone asked about the basement. In the model railroad, folks are still running down there right now, right? And is there any additional room or they pretty much take out the basement?
They take up a good half of the basement.
A good half of the basement?
Yes, the other half is utility space.
Oh, it's a really usable space. They're usually the usable.
Yes, you can argue it's fairly usable, how cool it is.
I hope to say this is a rare moment, I believe, when my colleague, Council Fishmind, I share a vision.
He didn't say anything about drag and repeat though.
Oh, no, I'm saying, I say that because I actually, I had read something publicly about two weeks ago suggesting pretty much very similar to what Council Fishmind suggested. In that this space could be a sort of a central marketplace draw for the community. And in doing so, we might even be able to still allow the model railroad to stay down in the basement as part of a historical nod of the hat to the station and, you know, so forth. And then in those discussions, someone brought up to me, gosh, I know the board of ed probably needs somewhere for their transition program. And I was thinking, I don't know if that entails something I can speak for them, but I, I thought to myself, wow, if the town utilizes this space as a sort of a market type of multi, multipurpose, year-round garden, mark slash kiosks for all sorts of things, depending on how much space the transition program needed, they could possibly be located there and run it. What an interesting career opportunity for our, the kids that come out of high school and are in that transition program move into meaningful employment. And, I mean, just the opportunities are endless. So by, and so bringing all that up, I'm not saying that's where we go, but I want us making that decision. I think, you know, in a very good way, I want this group here with the community involved, me involved in what happens with this building. I just, I don't want a small group to jump ahead a little bit and then we're all accepting and adjusting at that point. So my wish is that we are involved throughout the whole process with what uses could be, this building could have. The uses I'm talking about might even not require us to lease it to anybody. You fix it up and we might end up, an RFP might be simply for a building manager oversight. And maybe we could evolve program from the board of ed. Really, I think that's fine in the sky, I don't know. We need too much space. But I don't want to start with nothing. I love where we are right now. Sir, I really respect your clear love for the historic, your love for the historical side of this. I have no question that, you know, that's going to be taken care of and I just want to make sure we're involved in all this. That's it for now. Oh, so the grant, we're going to seek the grant. That would come before a bit RFP correction. I mean, by accepting this should go off a bit, I love it, the grant, but is there going to be a timeframe once we get the grant where we have to do something and that might force an RFP sooner than we want it?
Well, first, the first thing will be, you receive the grant. If you don't receive the grant, that's one point seven five million dollars we won't have. That's probably goes back to the drawing board. So it's getting the grant, purpose tonight is to apply for the grant. In fact, once we have the grant, then decisions with regard to RFP and those other issues will be before us. Move ahead.
Basically, how much time do we have to spend that night?
I don't know if there's a timeframe on the grant. I don't think there is.
Oh, oh, we, we.
We would want to move ahead as soon as possible. We don't want to wait here before we make decisions. We would be looking to make decisions in months, very close after we receive the grant.
Why?
Well, we need to move forward with RFP. So does that, we would, we would certainly move ahead with construction issues. One issue and then the other issue is when construction is completed, are we going to hire and all the further back?
So what kind of timeframe would that be? If you receive the grant, you have ahead with all of the repair work, renovation work. Give me a broad timeframe.
I would tend to say three months would be up to it, at least on a portion, depending on the timing of the grant. And certainly designing a grant, that can take us long to go through the legal process. But about three months after, we're going to go, we can be, certainly for the exterior restoration part, which is a specialty in itself, and plus on the interior work so that the RFP could be the key for interior development for interior tenants. Then we customize the interior core facilities to that tenant's apartment to coordinate with the natural user. That's under contract, but it just requires timing. So there are many different ways of facing this. To answer your question, three months to get up to bid for the exterior of the building, probably a good six months to have it completed.
We're about a year out, realistically. Everybody that talks about construction projects, all we hear about is, oh, they're going to take forever. They're going to take forever because of where it's going right now. We're maybe a year out and we can still be making decisions in nine months, two years from now about what we want to do with the building. That's reasonable, right?
Just keep in mind, these are all estimates, so.
Right, a big decision making, what did places have to see? Oh, I know, that's why, as far as I'm concerned, now again, I don't like some delays for delayed purposes, but we want to wait for cheaper. Pretty clear. Oh, God. Eventually, construction is going to get a little cheaper, but that's another story. But no, I know it's an estimate. I just, as I said, I don't want to see a rush. I'm rambling now. I don't want to see a rush to anything. So if we let you go forward with what you're proposing for the exterior, we get the grant, we give ourselves time to give this a lot of thought, nine months to a year out, then we have a better idea where are we with the RFP? What's the timing on the lease project? And we can only make these decisions in conjunction with the board of ed and, you know, we're not, we're not putting handcuffs on ourselves about what our options are or something. I appreciate all your time. I like where we're going. Thank you very much. I think it's a great idea. I'm all for it.
I think the timeframe for all of this, I mean, it's going to be a parallel path. Once this kicks off, say, as soon as we get the grant and construction starts, you're going to see a lot of interest and opportunity. Because, you know, people will want to commit to the building, all of your thoughts and ideas, you know, you're going to have a lot to choose from.
Well, no question. And I think it's, it's safe to say, you know, tomorrow, you'll have somebody here saying, I want to put in a railway. There's going to be no shortage of single tenant users that are going to want it. The question is, is that going to be the best decision for us as a community as a whole? Because we want to, we want to revitalize that whole town, town area. And I don't care what you say, a multi-use potential, multi-use draw year-round rather than a one single use, I think could, you know, be more productive using the property. That's why I want to keep it as an option. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Tessa, Counselor Tessa and Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon. In that same regard, does the EDC already have a tenant line?
No.
And so then, I guess my question then is, how do we get a tenant? It seems like it would be through RFP process, correct, that's the plan? And then who, who would be writing the RFP? Like basically, who decides what, you know, what the qualification are holding, what we want to get in there?
We, as architects and engineers, we help at least write it from the technical side and what their expectations would be. But certainly in terms of use criteria, I think that would really come from the city hall side. Certainly from the economic development commission, they're involved, I think, you're in, but about what are preferable uses and how they're expressing those incentives. It tends to be non-technical language in the RFP for the uses and requirements and demands that are needed in there for the submission are quite robust in terms of improving the viability of their concept.
And then who ultimately decide who's a board of ed?
It all comes back to the council. So the discussion about the development of the RFP, the council will be involved with that. Because it's a little different than the normal RFP because you're really, in this one, you're selling the town, right? You're saying, hey, developers or whatever, come to us, this is what. So it's going to be a bit more elaborate in terms of the sales pitch than a normal RFP would be. So, you know, if you'll be involved in that process, you'll be, hopefully, the decisions are going to end up being here because obviously you're spending the money tomorrow. because obviously you're spending the money tomorrow. So, you know, I think that's, I mean, the goal is thinking that there might be a developer as opposed to, you know, doing a deal with five different tenants, for example. So, you know, the thinking is that there would be a developer who would be interested in the project. RFPs would come in and then the whole, you would be part of the review of those RFPs and, you know, the decision-making. So, but, you know, like I said, it's a little bit different than a normal RFP, because we're saying, you know, we need to come in and invest with us. We're doing this investment, we want to be your partner, um, let's do this deal. So, a little different, but you'll be definitely involved.
Okay, yeah, because I, I guess I just want to make sure that the RFP is the way to written and ultimately the decision. I mean, I think we all have to try and guess what, what we think might keep us there. And I'm just trying to figure out who ultimately decides what, all the, so it sounds like the council will be ultimately the?
Yeah, the council, definitely. And, you know, I mean, initially, you're, you're saying to developers, tell us, make the pitch, right? So, um, we get a variety of types of proposals and, you know, the, the thing that you may want, maybe nobody fits that. And he says, that's his idea, but, or maybe half dozen, so we have to pick the right ones.
Okay, great, thank you. And then as far as the grant money, um, it, so it looks like it's 50% national and then it says in the back of the material that, um, you would look to seek that back, possibly through negotiations with a developer. But initially, we have to, you know, the town has to come up with that money. So where would that portion of the money come from? So you might need about eight hundred and three thousand. So where would we get that money from initially?
Well, the, it would be 1.75 billion that the town would be responsible for on this. And we would have to appropriate funds in order to do that. It could be a bond authorization or other means of appropriating funds. We, we had to appropriate the 1.75 million, we're ultimately at 3.5 million.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I thought 4.75 is the total. So it's 1.75 is our, it's our portion of the?
That's the 50%, we're matching with the state.
Understood. Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good evening. This is a very exciting project in my mind, it's got a lot of potential. Thank you for all the work that you're putting into it. I think investment in our downtown is so important. What can be done here with the train station is, you know, it, the opportunity is limitless and I'm very excited about you showing us here tonight and the conversations that will be happening. In the future, most of my questions were just answered, Counselor Tessa and Tata's questions about timeline. But I just, I guess I have a few more questions, just specifically about the timeline. So we think that we would be awarded the grant in Jan, in January if we did with that? Are, you know, are awarded the grant?
Uh, we, it's a total guess.
Okay.
Total guess, I believe the time that was delayed for this to be submitted, the application time is, is lengthened, so now it's in October. When exactly the state may award it, there's no way that's?
Okay, so there is no, there's no, there's no information from the ECDs with that?
The only thing I understand is it could be in January. You know, we can't be certain of that, so what happened?
Okay, so as soon as January, though, I mean, that's not that long for now. And then we think that we would go out to get within three months of, of that?
For apportioning, for apportioning the project, yes.
And so, I mean, I, I've mentioned this before when, when you've been before us. My biggest concern is relocation of adult education. Now, that is such an important program that we offer out of the sense in town. And I know that our Board of Education and the superintendent and staff are looking at other opportunities for, for the adult ed. Can you just touch upon that and let me know, you know, where are we looking? What, what other facilities in town are being considered? I mean, where are we in this process? I mean, are we not going to begin this process till January when we're awarded the grant? Or if we're awarded the grant?
I can't imagine what you know for that, Chair. Obviously, we can't talk about specific buildings that we may have been looking at amongst the community. I would just like to point out in that that may queue, if this grant is awarded, the town is three years to commit, the funds are five years to finish the project. So I would hope within that timeline, we were going to move to a town building such as if the operating design needs or something that we would be able to accomplish that. You know, in the event that we have to vacate sooner, the superintendent has spoken with different potential areas that we, we may, if we have to, that we have to go. So, you know, that's something that we will, if we have to. But we're hoping if the grant comes in, that everybody will be achieving the time.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. That, that's really my biggest concern. I, of course, we're supporting this tonight, but I, I just want to verbalize that, the fact that, you know, we, um, we should be taking very seriously, it sounds like we are, the relocation of adult education. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? Before we go to public, I just want to thank EDC and the firm, sort of, and the Board of Education for the possibility and all this. It's a big project and we'll do the best we can, so we appreciate the amount of time you're putting into it. Public question in answer period, Mr. Gross.
I'll respond to that, really. Through the chairs, the mayor again, how do you plan on funding this?
Town would have to appropriate 1.75 billion dollars.
Do you plan on using part of the money for it?
I don't know that that's going to be an available source or not. It's possible if there's money there, but we don't know that until we get through the application process.
Because you can get parallel grants, besides this grant, you can get parallel grants. You can use money as long as it's not from the state. So there are other funding ways. On here, are you going to put in, and I need to see the plans, electrical charging stations for cars?
Yes, we, Mr. Chairman, right now, we are just dealing with the core issues. Certainly, the future tenant would, uh, they'd take the need, either of its clientele or let's say of the public, if they're at a restaurant. The need for that, for the charging stations, certainly open to it. It is not a large burden, right now, but it's not part of the plan, because we're dealing just with the core condition.
Reason I ask is because this is a, this ran a point time for you coming in. Why aren't we going big? And doing that with the charging stations in the parking lot, which is adjacent to it, the state can pick up half the cost for. There was talk on the council about adding electric car charging stations there. This is a way that the state can pick up 50% of the costs. And it's been, in other communities that have received the spring, that's been one of the things that they put in the grant that they have received money for. Because that's one of the things they want this to be, is a transit-oriented project. And electrified cars is green, as far as the state's concerned. So we hope that EDC can add that in before, so it wouldn't cost the town as much. Why are we in the town doing the interior? I understand the exterior, but why aren't we going out to bid to develop it? Let them develop the interior the way they want it? Take the tax, because it's a store building, and take the tax credits that the state and the Fed have provided to renovate the store building? Wouldn't that be less cost expensive for the state, for the town?
Typically, the commercial landlord recommended, wrong, you provide a manhole shell that then, once a tenant's identified, can be easily modified to just a basic, basic, basic. And that's where we're concerned.
Well, shells for the exterior.
Yeah, the interior, it's all, it's a determination issue.
Okay, why aren't we taking, are we going to take over, even the town, take over the basement? Or is the model train going to stay there?
At this point, there's been no real determination on the basement. I think once we get closer to, we receive the grant, then it's, it's very likely that for one reason or another, we would not want another use in the building, given that a developer potentially would be taking over and I would think they would have to move. We need good access to the handles that are in the basement. And anything that confuses the issue of, of use of the space and security issues as well, I think we would, we would probably want to make the developer purely in charge of the entire area. And that would, that would mean that the railroad would have to move on.
With the, um, just to the point that somebody made, that if we didn't go ahead of this, then we'd be on the hook for 1.16 million dollars to develop the exterior, that's the cost. Other towns have one and the same thing, but they want the brands in the town. Because it's a store building, the state will pay for 50% of the renovations of the exterior. I'd say Wizard Lots did it recently, their train station that way, and then developed it into, went up to a contractor and they developed the interior for restaurants, et cetera. Their only expense was half the exterior and everything else was interior. It's just, what happens if you have a cost of 3.5 million approximately? That's the number you're willing to the state for. State rents the 1.75 million to half the grant. What happens by the time it's done? And I agree, Mr. Tessa, the likely cost will come down in time. But if they don't, and it's overrun, we're on the hook for 100% of the cost. We can't go back to the state? Would you?
I don't think there's any, any assurance that we can go back to the state. As opposed, you could make an effort to apply for a different grant, we may get it, we may not. It would be a decision at the time, and grants are available.
So we keep all of them, so, maybe?
All, all. Any other comments, questions from public, Mr. Gross?
Hey, Russell, Prime Department, so I'm hearing a lot of talk that this isn't a historic building. Does anybody know, is it at the National Register? I guess it is, 1993. Okay, and I have a real concern, and it's not the National Register. They don't allow modifications to the exterior of the building. We can do it with one inside. But if we want a restaurant in there, and you think the National Register is going to approve this very big stainless steel vent on the outside of the building, we have, we have another problem. So I would just be concerned about that in the future, thank you.
Thank you. A response to that, you're just smiling.
Yes, all our games are collectively tied by National Register and the standards to maintain the exterior materials and image. So we will not see masses of content coming in from the restaurant.
So there will not be a giant?
Your next, the developer has to accept the exterior as is.
Any other questions or comments? That's my bad.
I have a question. Why are we doing this? I'd like to know the ultimate goal, not the immediate goal of having this great-looking entity downtown. But since I've been involved for so many years and concerned for so many years with the vibrancy of the downtown as a whole. And I worked with Linda Bush and I worked with Casey. And their primary goal was to get permanent residents downtown. That is the primary goal, if you want a successful downtown. I worked very closely with Smith Craft, and they were looking at the Woodin Kaplan Park. They also looked at Silver Smith Park with me. Of course, they're not going to sell it. But their primary philosophy is, we bring in permanent residents. Not people who are going to come out of Friday night and then go home to North Leaf or Maridale or wherever they come from essence, to come to a particular place. That's not what creates a vibrant, long-lasting, successful downtown. What creates a long-lasting, vibrant, successful downtown is a lot of permanent residents downtown who frequent the same places over and over again. And as a fellow from Smith Craft said, they will determine their needs. They will determine what kind of businesses have to come into that downtown based on the things they want. The mayor of Milford said Milford was dying, in spite of all its restaurants, its boutiques, its clubs, its this and that, until Smith Craft came in, purchased a whole bunch of properties and renovated them to single and double tenant properties. Once they brought in these professional people who were coming from out of town, getting off at the train station in Milford, everything boomed in Milford. Because now there was a population that wanted to use the facilities that were there. We're talking about building an entity, a senior entity, that might look great, bring people in on a weekend or once in a while or twice a month. But how does that contribute to the sustainability of downtown that has a built-in clientele? This sounds like a shot in the dark. I want somebody to tell me, we earned the immediate, get a successful tenant, get a successful restaurant. Nobody's going to come in and buy a property in Wallingford, because it's a great restaurant downtown. Especially in the center of the downtown. How does this work toward that ultimate goal that Linda worked for, that Casey worked for, that the Woodin Kaplan Committee tried to work for? How does that bring you to that further entity, other than an immediate gratification? She would got a great thing downtown. And how do you even know it's going to sustain us? So I don't know how we got to here without looking at here. A, a business, a town, which is a business, always says, where am I going with this project? Where will it bring me 20 years from now, 25 years from now? In my opinion, the money that the town is going to have to spend one way or another to maintain and revitalize this business should be used to purchase properties downtown. They can then be sold, because we own it, and that's the only way the incentive housing programs are working. We now own it, now we sell to developer entity, which then, here's the units. Those current tenants will now determine the kinds of businesses they want downtown. Their living there will determine the needs and will therefore say to the people going, we need this. We need, I don't know what it could be, we need another restaurant or bar, and they say that, I don't know. But whatever they're going, they're, they're, just as in Milford, it was the permanent population that came into Milford because of the work done by Smith Craft that, as the mayor said, revitalized all of downtown Milford. Here, this may is a one-shot, high in the sky, total waste of money. We should be looking 20 years from now, 25 years from now, not next year. You're talking about, is it going to happen next year? It'll happen next year, it'll be done a year after that. You've got to start looking further ahead to say, what do we want to create down here that will bring in businesses? And you're not looking at, you're saying, well, this business will bring in people. Wrong. People bringing businesses. You're not going to be happy to have a few clientele that are downtown once or twice a week to a restaurant, have a couple beers or whatever. That's just so short-sighted. And, and that's why I'm wondering why we're putting so much effort into this, instead of buying up properties that you can then sell to a developer who can create residential units downtown that will bring people in.
Here, anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to remind everyone, there's a memo from the town planner, it's part of this package, that when this fits in with the planning and zoning efforts, with the housing incentive zone as well as the overlay zones to encourage a denser population in the downtown.
I'd like to see that.
There are, there are a lot of balls in the air, a lot of meetings, a lot of discussions, a lot of groups. EDC, the Madam Development Director, Ruder, this is a good thing, EDC here, before, we're ready to entertain what the tenant build-up may look like, maybe it's one, maybe it's several. We're just trying to get the ball, ball moving.
I'm going to be, I'm going to be, I'm going to be roomed, table roomed.
Just basically, stand to the mic then, so everybody can hear you. Just basically, stand to the mic, then, so everybody can hear you.
You know, we see, if someone who lives downtown, people are here. They are here. There are enough people here, but there's quite a few people here. But they're, you know, I've been looking at the downtown since 1983. I can see it in my sleep, and I'm going to tell you, you're going to regret this. You're going to regret it big time. I'm telling you now, I thought we won't be here by the time people will look back and say, you know what, she was right, but I've been doing this, I've been involved in the downtown since 1983. I worked every planner, and I worked with planners out of Wallingford, and I worked with developers who do this kind of thing. And they would tell you, if the guy who owns Smith Craft was here right now, Mr. Smart, he would tell you, you're making a mistake, you're coming in from the wrong end. But that's just, you know, you do what you want, as the council always does, or the administration always does. I can stand up here and talk till I'm blue in the face, but I don't think one of you up there has been working on the downtown since 1983, except probably the mayor. So, since when he got in, I got in.
Mr. Comfort?
Oh, come over, Mike, Mark, you're right. Um, there's nobody here from the grant department in our town, asking questions of these guys, people? Or you?
The grant hasn't been completed, it will be sent until we know that we have approval to apply for it.
Okay, um, I've got some concerns about what's actually taken place. First of all, why are we, do we entertain selling the building?
What was your question?
Do we entertain selling the building?
No.
Why?
Because the historic structure is very symbolic of Wallingford. We are not, at this point, interested in selling the building.
But we have, we're right next door, that was already to fall down, that the state ended up suing us, and that you allowed totally get interiorated. But we sold that, but we still have the ability to sell. I'm confused.
Mr. Comfort, I didn't interject, but we did not entertain in any significant manner selling it. I think, I was in a meeting, and you said, should we sell it? Everybody's like, no, and then we were done. So it was what, it's not like it wasn't discussed, but everybody in the room, nobody was interested in selling it.
But if it's so valuable, why wouldn't we sell it? But why are we taking the taxpayer, 20 of the state of Connecticut, plus powers, dumping $3.5 million into a building, and then just saying, well, we're just going to throw darts at it, maybe somebody will come, and while we're sitting there waiting, we have nobody idea what it's going to be? I asked this question before, it has yet to be answered. I'm sorry, is it, Mr. Silver?
Yes.
Hypothetically, I know people want to answer hypothetical questions, but say, a successful business comes in, state owns, and it's highly successful. Was there any type of traffic pattern in any of this design? Because my question is, is, say US food comes in with an 18-wheeler, the channel distributor comes on the other side with their truck. Then you have that pattern, freedom bound in New York coming out, dropping off their wagon briskets. So you're, you have such a congestion of traffic, and nowhere for them to park. But was that part of feasibility study done?
Mr. Comfort, I think, you're right, we don't want to get into all the hypotheticals. We're in the process of developing the site. This is one of many stages that we've gotten to, we have more than we've gone through to go. And no real developer coming in would have, would know what tenants, what commercial tenants they were going to have at this time.
So?
No different than they would know what tenants were going to be living in a apartment, that they were deciding to build.
But we want that building to be successful, but it's still, it's still has yet to be answered. Where are all these suppliers going to go to supply all the goods that are going to be supplying the successful usage of this building? Where are they supposed to go?
We don't know that that's what it's going to use for, Mr. Smart.
Um, part of this grant application, which is due on October 7th, which is a week and a half away, that's when it's due, correct, right? I'm in?
I believe so.
Okay, so it's still a week and a half. And I also agree with Mr. Tesco, why are we rushing this? This whole thing just got dumped on your lap. $3.5 million. And you guys, yeah, it sounds great, but at the end of the day, I was here when you guys all, all the town council wanted it. We want to be part of the input, we want to have say in this thing, as far as I know, you guys have no say. I haven't attended one meeting where you guys said, well, this is our vision, this is what we'd like to see. What I'm saying is, hey, we need $3.5 million to move forward with this. We still don't know what it's going to be. Where is the feasibility study for this? No one knows. But you're supposed to supply one on your application on October 7th.
The drawings provided by Mr. Silver, his firm, are, will answer the questions as far as what the town's plans are. I don't know what you mean by feasibility study. We submit plans and drawings, and we show a ready project. That's what we're obligated to do, and we believe it beats all of the terms of the grant.
Okay, that's the reason why I asked anybody in our town that is familiar with grants was here, because they should be answering these questions. If you go, if you guys have internet, if you go on the Connecticut website for this particular grant, there's 27-page document that the town administrator has to fill out. And one of them says, feasibility project, discuss market demand for the proposed use. Market demand style. So clearly, one's supposed to be there, but we don't even know if it exists. And it says, providing these five examples of similar scale projects that the applicant team has undertaken, including references. Who is the applicant team?
This is town of Wallingford, and we have not undertaken a similar project, to my knowledge. Certainly, since I've been involved in town government, maybe sometime prior to that, but this is unique.
Okay, but it says that you have to supply the information for at least five of them. And then it says, if D E C, excuse me, if D E C D funding is used, completed on time, on budget, project issues and how they will be resolved. Project testimonials. I don't want to take up any more of your time, because I can see where this is going. But one of the issues here is, is that, am I correct to believe that if this thing fails, which I don't think that it's going to, but I think it should, if it did fail, that you're preparing mayor to spend $1.116 million to get that exterior of that building up to the standard by which these guys are saying it needs just as far as corrective maintenance?
The town would be obligated, as those repairs are needed. They're not all needed right now, but much of the improvements that have been made are now aged in process. And as the roof, or windows, or whatever else might fail, it would be looking to keep it in good repair. That doesn't mean we'll spend all of that one time. But we are obligated to maintain that building, and that's what we'll do.
Okay, so I thought I read an article in newspaper where you said, well, even if we don't get the grant, we're going to spend the $1.116 in maintenance. Just go back to my point, even back when I tried to get the building maintenance committee. If we still had that, this would have never been, gotten to the situation that it's in right now. As far as the leaks, based upon Mr. Silver's report, says that, or the contagious here. You've placed most fallen courses of brick veneer and mortar joints due to water infiltration. From our visual inspection, the damage of the brick veneer appears to be from water intrusion. Adding gutters, which were originally on the building, will aid in preventing future water damage to the facade. Whatever happened to those gutters? Why wouldn't you go back now? Clearly, this visual inspection said that if they were there, I almost speak words as well, then this problem wouldn't have happened, is that the case?
I remember I was informed that there were not gutters originally on the building, and so they were removed. Since then, other records indicate there were gutters, so they can be returned.
I am totally against this. I want to be on the record, I want this tape to go to D E C D, because I want to be on the record that we did, our biggest project that we had recently from D E C D was Senate fix under term building. And I want to be on record, from D E C D, that three years after the sign-off on this project, with problems that were signed off by the architects, the administration, Public Works, and the contractor, I waited three years, I brought it up, because of me, the taxpayer, the whole interior of the building had to get redone. And that was oversight by all the people that signed up on it. And it says that anybody has the testimonials that they're supposed to be submitting. I want that in there, as well as the stuff that I provided the town council with the pictures on it. I also want to be on the record, because I think that if we went down to that building today, you'd still see a problem with the exterior of the building after it was repaired, again. And that was two years ago. Thank you.
Mr. Gross, do you want to reiterate? Is there anybody else that wants to make comments, we're over the sign limit, Mr. Gross, I'd rather be quick or... I don't know, all right, Mr. Gross, you want to go first?
No, I don't care. Gross, one member. Two things, one is, why is it just this building? Why aren't we like other communities that have submitted applications to the state of Connecticut? We had the opportunity to see what other communities have sent, and were approved for. They just didn't take one building. They involved all, had all the other owners and buildings in the area, and went into a grant with them, because housing is a big component of this. And why aren't we going, if this is going to be the gateway and all that, I just thought of the Mr. Zinski's point, you need people downtown. This grant allows you to go into contract with lien owners, apartment owners, whoever you want to call, and allows you to go 50/50 with them to renovate those areas, and fix it up and make it really look nice, and that will bring people in. Permanent tenants. And why aren't we doing any weight funding down there? Why aren't we having ended this, in this grant? It just seems that it's just this building, but if you look at all the other applications, it's much more, it's a, it's an area. Sometimes it's a city block long that they're redoing. And I think we're missing a big opportunity. I mean, I know you're voting for this, I'm not, I mean, I understand all that. But we're missing a big opportunity, as we always seem to do. We're not going for the full Angeli here, we're just going for a little piece of the pie, where we have the opportunity to build that whole lower hall, that whole lower, upper hall, and put it beyond area, and then, and you've got all those landlords, and talked to them, you really could come up with a nice downtown, just, instead of just one building, thank you.
This is fantastic. I think, does anybody feel better, I've been in meetings about using this building for this since years before the pandemic. And this has been a long time. A lot of the landlords in the area have to talk to, the board of editor, talk to Nachmento, back when he was here for years, primarily, I'll come in at least four years, so...
This is a new program where they're cooperating 50% universally, and if you're a landlord in the area, you're talking...
Mr. Gross, there's D E C, Tim Ryan, when he was here, there are constant, constant talks, negotiations.
It's a weight finding, they're...
We're not there, that's not the project we chose. This is what we're doing today.
They have the weight finding, and at the electric power stations, and all of those type of things, those are ours. And those should have been included all.
Thanks, thanks, please.
I just have one question, which I asked initially, and then I got talking, and I never got the answer. And I'm hoping I'll get the answer.
Sure.
It's like, so where are we getting down to? What is your long-term goal? By developing this one particular building? What is the long-term goal for downtown Wallingford?
The...
Go ahead.
The long-term goal is, in the P O C D, the Planner Conservation Development, and one of the goals was that we developed a transition in this manner, that can be discussed this evening. Um, there are a lot of balls in the air, and this is just the one that we're discussing tonight.
Well, I would think that you'd be able to say to me, we feel, if we do this, 25 years down the road, 10 years down the road, 15 years down the road, we'll have the vibrant downtown, downtown, I'm a native, I still call it downtown. I don't call it Wallingford Center Street, I call it downtown. That we'll have the vibrant downtown that we have been working for, for so many years. This project is not yet.
I disagree, but thank you. That is the end of the public question, answer period, by over 10 minutes. Any other comments or questions back to the council, that's where we're flying.
So presently, this building is used by the government. Certainly, it adds a purposeful use, used for development. My vision is that it looks better, that it is brought up in code, and that it has more of a non-governmental function in our downtown area. So, you know, certainly, we are putting in bugs, because we don't know what a future tenant, or a tenant's are going to want in that regard. Certainly, a future tenant is the first step, from my perspective, on developing this property. If there comes to us and says, hey, you know, like your architect, you might be reading that lot back there, you know, would you help us in doing that, partner? You know, that would be perhaps part of the next step. This is the beginning, this is to bring shadow to a state that we can say to a third party, would you like to be part of our community? They may be a part of our community now, and maybe want to move into this space. But it would be, from my perspective, irresponsible for us to develop a property at a level that curtails the various tenants going to this building. And all of those concerns, you know, if it's one restaurant, and, you know, we could talk about, you know, how they can offload bread and eat at the same time, is there enough room? This is very similar to the process that went through the American Legion Building, which a lot of us were here with. I was up there. You know, we had a building that was owned by the town. We said to the public, come to us and make proposals on how we utilize this property. That's essentially what I see, what we're doing here. The American Legion Building, we toured it, it was nowhere near a state of renting at that time. We are making this property more attractive for someone to partner with us and to make our lower downtown area more vibrant. So that's my perspective and part of my vision, so thank you.
Thank you, are there any other questions, comments, or concerns? I was going to say, seeing none, but I raised my hand.
Yeah, I just wanted to also, also address, you know, some of the questions. I mean, I, the... The way I look at it, at Wallingford Center, and you do call it downtown, I have, I have the habit to call it uptown and downtown. I consider everything at the top of the hill uptown, and everything going down lower center is part of the downtown. And, um, I, I've lived in this town my entire life, and I've watched the entire Center Street change. In the 70s, were a lot of little mom and pop stores, and that's what brought, drew people at the time downtown, up and down the Century. And, and Mr. Kestrel is absolutely right, as those, as those, as the people's habits changed, those stores didn't survive anymore, and they closed up in favor of other things. And I would like to see, the vision in the future that I would like to see, is a lot more business that gets attracted than is, than is called streetworthy or footworthy. Because what I see today is a lot of shops that close at 4:00 in the afternoon. There's a few elements that are open after that, but not many. Even some of the restaurants close their kitchens at 9:00, and the buildings are closed at 10:30, at 11:00. The downtown area doesn't maintain, because those businesses are very limited in what they do. And I, I... And I, I do agree with her that without having a population that lives there is part of a problem. There's already a lot of what I'll call ancillary population around there. The Judge Street condominiums, the Parker Place condominiums, but there's nothing to really bring them into Wallingford Center after nine P M. We'll leave here. If I'm hungry after this meeting, all the kitchens are closed. I can't get a thing to eat. In the eighties, I could do it till eleven o'clock at night on a Tuesday. So, I, I think there's a mix here. Ms. Kestrel also brought up Milford. Now, Milford had a situation where Smithcraft came in and bought up the properties. We have been driving at that a long time. We have a different situation here in town. Every property is a little bit of patchwork. So, could the town have been buying up along the way? Technically, that's what we've been doing around the Brothers parking lot since the fifties. Every time a building came up, we bought it, and we owned pieces of those properties all the way around with the Brothers parking lot there. When, when a store became available, it was bought, there was only a few properties left there now. But we, we can't just go and force them to buy, force them to sell, as you say, make it available to town to buy it, clear the entire lot. There, there, there's only so much the town can do purchasing properties, otherwise developers would do it. I, I agree that it would be great if a developer came in and did this over time, bought up the property, then bought the adjacent property and built a big area so that we could utilize the zoning, the overlay zone we've got here. And that is sort of what they did over at Parker Place, they utilized all that space for that. There are people that are there now, they're not coming downtown. People at Judge Square, there's only so many of them that are coming down. We need, we need something that will bring more people downtown. I don't, I would have to defer to experts that know better than I do if more people is that answer for something that is a draw. I'd like to believe that by attempting to do both things and to add other elements, talking about the charging stations, by, by nature of people that own those automobiles, they'll park them, they'll charge them, and they'll go someplace. I do that today. So there's all these little elements that we should be bringing together, and I think that's part of the whole plan, and I think that this building is a piece of it. So, I'm looking forward to seeing this move forward as a part of that plan, and then all of the other things that we can add on ancillary to, to build up this area. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you. I'm looking forward to the purple. Please.
Harmon?
Yes.
Fishby?
Yes, sir.
Maron?
Yes.
Tad?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Sandra?
Yes.
Chairman Lott?
Yes, thank you. Motion passes. Thank you very much. The next agenda item is the Council, Harmon needs the E D C, may one, and I hang around and those who might have comments on it, but it is to notify local cross nonprofit and business entities from the opportunity and procedure to apply for funding funds. Want to start with a little field shortcut?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we all know, we are moving along with the art process, and, and something that we really haven't discussed up here that I can remember is the way we're going to notify the nonprofits and business entities that serve at Wallingford. And so I wanted to at least start that conversation this evening. I, I think to make this process as transparent as possible and to make as many nonprofits and businesses have the opportunity to apply for funds, that we should publicize the application process in the web portal to the fullest extent that we can. I know that the web portal is supposed to go live first week of October, and so I don't know if the town has had plans to notify businesses and nonprofits in any form, but I wanted to talk about doing just that, if that conversation hasn't been had by other entities. I think, just to slip off here, but I, I think one of the easiest ways to do this is obviously to put notifications in our electric bills. And so that's where I wanted to start, just with that idea and the possibility of the council, I would find.
In my record, that Senator Mayberry part came up in some of the subcommittee when we had one, is that though I have the bills, E D C currently is putting together a marketing plan for it, we're also going to move the press. And then as the councilor, Sandra, you said, I think the last meeting, you know, he was gonna blow up social media, so.
Sure, I have a formal motion to put notifications in our electric bill, but I, I just think not everyone watches these council meetings, not everyone reads the Record Journal. I want to make sure that every business and every nonprofit especially is aware of this opportunity that they can apply for funds.
Is that natural motion or?
Yeah, sure, I'll.
May I really want to?
Well, I'll make a motion that all electric customers receive notification, the opportunity to apply for ARPA funds and instructions on how to access them.
Moved by Councilor Harmon, and signed by Councilor Testa. Councilor Testa, do you want to comment? Or no, you're all set?
Paul Ford?
Councilor Fishby and then Councilor Tad.
Well, I think it's true. You know, I'm in support of the notification thing, but I really expected that as part of this agenda item that we would get, you know. Isn't that like, speaking here in October one?
It would be October tenth, it's gonna go.
Okay.
I talked to the consultants today, it's gonna go on October tenth.
And what's the window for which?
The council had approved sixty days.
What's that?
It's been one of the prior ones, we're gonna do it in sixty days. We, in talking to the consultant, we had made it shorter than I realized it should actually have approved in sixty days, so it's gonna be a sixty-day window. I do think we need to check for the electric division as to whether or not they can isolate the business bills, because that's another day they would go, so we can check that.
Okay, how do we deal with nonprofits then? I mean, we just not submit it into every electric bill?
They wouldn't be in a separate category, I think, from businesses in terms of the electric. I just don't know if electric can pull out and just send the notice to the business nonprofit side versus individuals.
I don't understand. I don't understand the harm in letting a private individual know that perhaps this is what they work for, perhaps the nonprofit they volunteer at is able to do this.
All right, okay.
So, let's make it easier that way. Everybody should get it. But then you get to the, is there a flyer that's out there that's been approved? Because, you know, there's one thing, you know, notice comes in various forms, right?
I think the E, I think the E D C was working on marketing to businesses, so.
Well, we've got, we're just talking about the electric bill thing right now. Is there a flyer that somebody has presented? Because we certainly haven't gotten anything.
No, we, and not that, it hasn't been made yet.
Okay.
If that can be done.
Yeah, I mean, if mine permits, I'd like to be able to see it. You know, I'm not looking to micromanage, but. There are, I mean.
Come on, Paul, on this thing?
One good argument, the motion itself and micromanaging, and I didn't make it, remember that. So we are.
Nobody else made that argument.
On the way, yeah, myself. You know, I totally agree with the spirit. There should be, you know, something out there. I mean, I would be going to the consultant and asking them if they have a standard meme that we could modify for Wallingford and make that like the poster child for this, you know, so that everybody knows, so that's the picture. It's always associated with the Wallingford line. You know, stuff like that, the marketing campaign.
You don't even have anything.
Excuse me? So, I, I'm in support of the motion, you know, I don't, I'm hoping that we don't need to go down every vehicle and make motions with regard to all of them, but I would like, at least like to see what is intended to go on. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Any other questions, concerns, or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm wondering about the, well, I was thinking we should also be making note of the, the third aspect, which is the government projects, but I'm still uncertain as to who will be able to apply for those. So do we, do we know what that process is yet? Because I'm thinking if, if individuals or citizens or can't apply for them, then we would also want to note that too, that they would also go to this website and be able to either put ideas or submit, I'm not sure what that process is about, but it's fine.
Because the public would have enough information to propose a, a full project and costs and all that other stuff, they think that's probably a must, probably.
So, are, are, is the council who is going to be proposing those ultimately?
I think. I'm not the one answering that question, because I argue against it. I don't think so. The new Councilor Testa's saying.
There have been whispers, so.
Municipal projects would follow the same process they always do, which would mean the administration will provide suggestions, and if they agree, it'll be between council and administration.
Okay. And so if a council wanted to suggest something, they would just notify your office, and then you would ultimately decide that's in fact to us, and we chose to do that?
Who, who is doing this?
If, if one of us were to say, you know, Mr. Mayor, we would like you to consider this.
Yeah.
He would just contact you, and then he'll ultimately let us know. Okay. Okay, perfect, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, Councilor Testa.
And since we got on that subject, and then, I felt we all, I felt the decision here was that we didn't have to submit it to the committee.
Right, that's the agenda.
I know. It's, 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 we haven't gotten there, I'm just saying, we, we haven't gotten there. I know what you're saying. That's how I want it to be. We come up with an idea, we talk about it, we propose it to the mayor, and he's, well, I'm like, let's, let's talk about this together. But we agreed that we then have to get it approved by the committee. So, we, this is a decision for another meeting. It's a big discussion we have to get that one down, I think. But I see you're going, I, I, I think we really opened up a big can and said, okay, we want to let everybody know, hey, you started proposing projects, and, you know, we're to kick the can down, go far enough for that.
So I can see in any of your votes on that meeting that I left, that that's, you know, I gave you, I drafted from what I could believe from the minutes as to what you wanted, I didn't ever have a response. So, there seems to be some discussion that's continuing. Is it all right not to put that in the portal at this time? Because.
I don't know that the government project marks anyone in the portal.
All right, that's, I, I didn't think they should, but I didn't know that that was the case, so it's not the case.
Was it discussed at the first committee?
Like way back?
No, I mean, the video guys that were.
There's nothing in the minutes that began indicating that was the case. I just think.
I never understood that.
I meant to ask for a report on that, but I didn't get a chance to get it out in general.
Yeah, I mean, I gave the video to the town clerk, it was supposed to be uploaded, and I believe they're trying to track it. But to answer your question, the result of the meeting was that there hasn't been enough direction from this body as to that aspect of the, of the, of the, of the, of the.
Well, that's good. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments on the motion on the table? Councilor?
And I want to, 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 that's, I think, why the council voted to give that authority to the committee. And again, we could reject everything that they do outright at the end, right? It's all coming back to us for the final sitting. So, um, that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Um, I think the, um, I mean, I think it's not a lot, but I think that the committee would not be involved in politics in all looks of either. Um, but the council, I think, is much more tested. And I argued kind of before is that we are the legal authority. Um, that's, that's, that's what makes us different than than everybody else. Um, we get elected every few years and that, um, that's where that goes by. So I guess that the committee will review or whatever, um, when that time comes. Um, after all the applications have been submitted, my friends and folks. Are there any other comments on this motion going to the public, Mr. Gross?
Gross Long Hill Road. You know, I mentioned this before, but EDC's here and the mayor's here, maybe they got you know how many businesses there are in town that are registered and how many 501(c)(3)'s are registered in the town? Approximately? Is it less than five thousand? Okay, why don't we, because some don't get electric bills. I have a tenant, I pay electricity for it, it's commercial. So, um, they don't get an electric bill. Oh.
Kim Wolf, uh, EDC. There's two thousand one hundred small businesses registered now. All right, and that is, I don't know if that includes nonprofits or not.
Sure, we can just stand the mic a little bit longer, or whatever.
See, there's two thousand one hundred small businesses now, and I'm not sure if that includes nonprofits or not.
So, but that, I mean, the town has to have the database because they tax us, they send us letters, and they know who we are, or who small businesses are. So why doesn't, the easiest way would be to send everybody a letter. I mean, that would be the easiest way that you know everybody, because if you want it to be fair and equitable, something, and it should be done in two languages, it should be done in Spanish and English. And it should be sent to everybody and the 501(c)(3)'s. You don't want somebody coming in on December twenty, or whatever day it is, December, saying, I didn't know anything about it. This is the fair and equitable way to do it, and it's not, it's not a big cost, and ARPA would take it worth it anyway. It's less money than what you could spend it on the consultant so far. If you got five thousand to send out, what can it cost you? Five hundred dollars, three thousand bucks? So it would be the best way to do it to get everybody through it.
Thank you. Any other questions from the public? It's for Congress. Then Mr. Doherty.
Riley O'Connell, Ederton Road. Uh, I really appreciate this agenda items, I need to cancel the car, maybe bring this on here, because I do think sixty days, considering how long we've been at this process, is not a lot of time. And if we look back at what we've heard multiple times, with multiple businesses missing out on applying for PPP money, for instance, previously. It's understandable business owners, especially small business owners, are spread thin. But that bonus falls on us as a town for failing to notify the property, this is money that's available. This is an opportunity to not fail like that. So I think it's, I am for the council to leave, and the administration to leave no stone unturned in terms of our goodness. I think, uh, putting out a letter with the electric bills is a good idea, it's a good start, but it's only a start. I hear on almost a daily basis, I'm sure that the town councillors get this a lot too, from nonprofits who operate primarily, not wholly involved, but have no idea, no idea, we're two weeks away, they have no idea that this potential money is out there. Many nonprofits don't have a physical location. Their presidents, their board members might not even live in town, even if that nonprofit is registered and functions primarily involved, right? I can think of several off the top of my head. Many of whom have been here multiple times throughout this process, so the, uh, including this flyer, the bill is a great start. I would like to see, you know, using newspaper publications, like the Record Journal is another way. Uh, I just fear that our town's a sort of aversion to technology and not having potentially an email list for these groups, et cetera. Um, I really want to make sure we're not giving you any talk behind, because the only way that this is going to be a fair process, an ethical process, is if everyone knows there's a process, that everyone knows this opportunity is out there. So I realize, I know all the council people care deeply about this, but time is of the essence here, so I really hope that if it requires putting some money behind it to get that business out there, then let's do that. And let's do that now. Because even if the business hears about this fifty days to a sixty day period, they very well might not have the time uh, and a business capable as is to get that done. So, um, I appreciate your delight and hope we look further, um, in terms of what we can do. Thank you.
Mr. Dory.
Good evening, everybody. Sean Dory, Wolfingford County, R M C A, and also Long Hill Road, Wolfingford County. Uh, first and foremost, thank you so much for all your tireless efforts, uh, in regards to this, um, topic for discussion and, uh, all your, all your efforts. Um, on behalf of the businesses and the nonprofits, uh, if you have this information to share, I'm trying to kind of follow the timeline along. Uh, you mentioned October tenth as a, uh, application open. Uh, December tenth as a deadline. Um, at some point in time, we talked about a technical assistance. Is, if that's going to be communicated as well to, uh, all the businesses and nonprofits. Uh, and also after the December tenth, um, deadline, uh, then what happens and what is that timeline, uh, for basically decisions and all that kind of stuff? I don't know, ready to, just got that, uh, response tonight, or if you can include that in your communication?
Great, thanks. Night. We're originally going with early October. We are talking now about the tenth, as we know things are forming up uh, for the businesses and nonprofits. Sixty days after that, um, when that goes live, we can order the marketing, um, and as you know, you've been in our meeting, stop us from preventing the wire from getting any of the money, so. Uh, yeah, no, you'll be aware. And then it's up to the review committee. They're not allowed to review any of the applications until all the periods have closed and everything's ready to get everything, so. Uh, it'll have to be processed after that. For the port qualities, I'm gonna guess it's not gonna be until we get here, but doubts are gonna be huge for persons. Any questions? Thanks.
Mr. Chairman. I would just suggest that you really think about, as soon as the applications start coming in, we have the review done, we'll make a decision.
Yeah.
Okay, we're, we're gonna back this thing up.
We are.
Okay.
We are, you're siding the back of the
Awesome, and we're gonna back this thing up, so January, February, March.
Great. Any other questions from the public? Seeing none back at the council, Councilor Tannen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I know the consultant spoke about this too, and I don't know how exactly communicating this to him or ask him this, but, um, he says he'll report a lot of the basic qualities. I know, um, he already knows or, you know, he already knows, um, the different outlets they use to advertise this, so I'm sure he just communicating to him that we want this, um, you know, publicized as, as much as possible, you know, I'm sure he threw us a bunch of ideas. The electric bill, I think, is a unique one because not a lot of the other towns maybe have that method. Um, if they don't have, you know, mailer that's going up to to that, um, portion of the population. So I'd like that idea also, and I think each one of the ideas probably won't hit every single person, but in totality, if we use all of these different, um, methods, hopefully everybody is informed, so um, I'm not sure how we inform the consultant or who allow the consultant to say we want these methods used. Maybe he's just already doing that.
And so they don't do the advertising, that would be us doing the advertising.
But they give us the idea.
Yeah, I, I have no problem contacting them and saying, you see, you know, what I, what ways do we see people do it? Different talents do it, we can do that.
Great.
And then we'll also, you know, I have given you a memo with the estimate of the timeline, but that was when I thought it was gonna be less than sixty days, so give you another one, wait, and I'll talk to the consultants about that, and we'll we'll have that, and, you know, we'll put it in a flyer, obviously we're gonna say that this is estimated. So, I mean, until you know how much you're gonna be getting, and stuff, you don't, you know, do it all.
Thank you.
Councilman Fishman.
So now, the motion that's on the table is in direction to a town department that is not present here. We'll find out whether or not the timeline is going to be acceptable or
It's more of a recommendation, right? Since we don't have that authority.
Right. Yeah, I, well, I don't know, that, that's why the motion was structured. So, I, I just don't know, like, when they do this, when they would give a mail, when they would be happy for this thing to get inserted, you know, what are the logistics, is this doable, that kind of stuff. Usually what we would have, if this was on an agenda, they would note, so. Anybody have that information?
I don't know, I mean, we can watch it.
Yeah, we will pursue getting it done, and if there's a problem, then we'll work with the problem. Uh, at this point, the critical thing is having, having a document that can be inserted. So whatever details are associated with that, obviously the size of the piece of paper, et cetera. I, I don't know if the weight of it becomes a factor, but we'll have to find out.
Councilman Fishman's available for the draft at that time.
Absolutely. I'll have it done by midnight if you want. Um, okay, I just, you know, we know who we are, our absolute emotion necessarily passes there, but
I was gonna say at the beginning, yeah, it sounds like it's just, we have to
Sure, I mean, I'll, I'll draw the motion, um, but I just wanted to have the conversation and make sure that something is being done to identify all these entities in town.
It'd be very difficult.
Like, like, so are you gonna draw it, are we gonna
Yes, I'll draw it.
All right, draw a hand, so, so. Great, any other comments on this? Councilman Sanders.
Yeah, I just had a quick question. Um, with, when the portal opens up for the application, we're gonna get a link for this, and I presume we'll go on the town website? Well, all right, so, I mean, that's another avenue. Yeah, I, I agree with everybody else, it's important to kind of try to blanket this, but I, I, I would think that between a mailer, the website, um, you know, a lot of the nonprofits are, you know, I, I, I don't know how we can miss, I'm sure Record Journal's gonna do an article on it, so I mean, I can't think of another way, I'm sure I'm making phone calls, so. I, I appreciate the diligence, but I, I, I think we're at all bases here.
I think we're doing the best we can, and I get emailed every other day, so.
Yeah, I do too, I hear you.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing nothing done. I have a number ten, uh, this is the draw from tonight, will be moved to a, a future meeting. Number, item number eleven, I entertain, uh, I will have a motion to go into executive session pursuant to general kind of connection to section one dash two three five F and section one dash two hundred six B regarding strategy and negotiation. Excuse me. Negotiations with respect to the following pending litigations. Wolfingford Group LLC versus Town of Wolfingford. Three fifty North Cherry Street Extension LLC versus Town of Wolfingford. And the Yalesville Properties LLC versus Town of Wolfingford.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Councilman Fishman, second by Councilman Sanders. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay, seeing none, you are now out of executive session. Motion to come out of executive session? So moved. Moved by Councilman Sanders, second by Councilman Fishman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay, seeing none, you are now out of executive session. Entertain a motion to authorize a settlement, the pending tax appeal matter of Wolfingford Group LLC versus Town of Wolfingford, as discussed in executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Fishman, second by Councilman Testa. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay, seeing none, motion passes. Entertain a motion to authorize a settlement in the pending tax appeal matter of Three Fifty North Cherry Street Extension LLC versus Town of Wolfingford, as discussed in executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay, seeing none, passes. And the last agenda item. Uh, you will entertain a motion to authorize settlement, the pending tax appeal matter of Yalesville Properties LLC versus Town of Wolfingford, as discussed in executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay, seeing none, motion passes. Special thanks to TV crew who had to handle technical issues with the cameras. And I will declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you.